...and that you will faithfully perform the duties as Planning Commission Board Member according to the best of your abilities, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
You can have a seat and we'll get you appointed and approved here as quickly as we can.
I'll put this up here. I'm going to need your signature and date, and then that's me underneath. Okay?
How long ago was it that you and Misty moved here?
2001.
Okay. I was thinking it must have been right around 2000. On our schedule to be here for the invocation, but since he's not here, I'll say welcome, and if you'll all bow your heads, please, we'll have a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for being with us tonight. We just pray that you will help us in the decisions that we have to make. Help us to be clear-headed, to hear each other, respect each other, and make good decisions. In your holy name we pray. Amen. And it is seven o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order, and you might need to join me in the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Devin, could you take roll call, please?
Mike Collins.
Here.
Chad Fuller.
Here.
Mindy Yalvid.
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Steve Wallace.
Mayor Subhaman.
Here.
All the Conover Board, except council members, Bob Porter, and Steve Wallace.
Looking for approval of the agenda?
I move that the agenda be adopted as printed.
Second. We have a motion from Larry seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And for reading and approval of the minutes of our previous meeting of November 3rd.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the November 3rd, 2022 regular meeting.
Second. We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. I don't believe we have any pre-approved reports or presentations unless somebody speaks up. So we'll move on from there to public comment. Is anyone here to make public comment? We have Chase on the agenda later, so you don't need to speak up now. We'll let you do that later. We'll move on then to communications, which Devin has for us.
A few things have been going on, and I thought I should keep everybody up to date. I gave you all a copy of the results of the city proposals. The Queen House Millage unfortunately was the only one that failed. And to a quick summary of everything, the two charter amendment proposals, I've created certified letters for the two charter amendments. These letters were given to the city attorney, and he will deliver the letters to the state and the county according to the Home Rules Act, and the charter is effective immediately. The proposal for the sale of property is on tonight's agenda, and the mayor will leave discussion for your consideration. The millage proposal for the parks haunt. I'm seeking the city attorney's advice on the proper way to move forward. Due to the proposal passed, does not give details of when this millage will be applied to taxes. Once city attorney advises me and the details have been answered, I will move forward with a letter to the county letting them know the proposed past and which taxes the millage will be applied to. All candidates for mayor and council seats, of course, won their election seats. Newly elected term begins December 1st at noon. You will receive a letter from me confirming your elected seat and the term. Please note that at the December 1st council meeting, all November 8th winning elected officials will be sworn in. Plan on pictures to be taken of you, and if you want to dress up, there's your pre-warning that it's coming. Also, the marijuana license application for provisioning center retail license. City only received one complete application during the 30 days opening to accepting applications. The mayor will report more details to council for your consideration later on. Also, a referendum petition for ordinance 366 has been submitted for the clerk's review and approval. The city attorney and I have reviewed the petition, but at this time will be rejecting the current petition due to the Michigan election law. The font is not correct on the summer part. The letter of rejection was mailed to the Shawnee Coalition today. The group has 90 days from the time the ordinance went into effect to submit signed referendum petitions. This ordinance went into effect on October 7th. I gave you that information to know that even though they're being rejected, if they get the petition in and approved, they could possibly still meet this deadline. So I'm giving you that information. So reminders of events, this will keep going through the first meeting in December, too, but I wanted to start making you all aware. November 1st, City Hall will be closed Thursday and Friday, November 24th and 25th, in observance of Thanksgiving. Also, city and Perry will be judging Christmas lights again this year on Tuesday, December 6th at 7:00 p.m. Turn on your lights, 1st through 5th place receive cash rewards. Next, Santa's mailbox will be out in front of Perry District Library starting Wednesday, November 23rd through December 19th. For Santa's sake, it is very important that an adult neatly print the child's name and address on the letter to ensure Santa's message gets back to your child. Next, the city police department and Carl's supermarket are in conjunction again to have stuff at the market. For a local food bank, which will take place at Carl's supermarket on Saturday, December 10th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Also, Christmas Fantasy 2022 will take place Saturday, December 10th, from 5:15 to 8:00 p.m. Check out the city website to view the current confirmed events. City expects more events, so stay tuned by checking to our website under important information for additions or possible canceled events. If you don't know the city website, it's www.perry.mi.us. And last, on the events, and not least, Shirley is asking council if she could have your RSVPs to attend the Christmas dinner, which will be happening Friday, December 2nd. And also, ordinance committee, of course, has been working on different ordinances. There was two that were ready to go to the city attorney, and I've finally gotten the confirmation, and these ordinance are the odor abatement and the noxious weeds, and they have been confirmed okay by the city attorney and will be ready for possible first reading at your next regular council meeting. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Devin. Because we only had one applicant for the marijuana provisional license, our city attorney has advised us that we do not need to hold the lottery special meeting that we had scheduled, so I will cancel that. We just have to move ahead on the first meeting of December to approve the provisional license that will be awarded to the one applicant, but we don't have to have the special meeting. That had been scheduled for November 21st, so that will be canceled. I did go ahead and approve payment of the emergency evaluation that Kevin had to do on the broken well, and it wasn't quite as much money as he thought it might be because when they pulled the pipe out of the ground, it broke apart, so they didn't have to do quite so much to get it out of there. So that was $2,655. Kevin's going to talk to us about now how much it's going to cost to repair it and go over that bill. I think you have a copy of that in your pocket. One thing I'm wondering about, we'll do that later, Kevin. One thing I'm wondering about council is, we do have our property that's south of town that we had on the ballot for approval to sell. Do you want to get a Realtor opinion of value? I gave you my retired Realtor opinion of value, but if you'd like me to contact a couple of Realtors and have them do a market analysis on that piece, I'd be happy to do that.
Are we going to talk about that later on the agenda, or do you want to talk about it now?
Well, I guess I'll just put that in your mind, and we can talk about it later. But also, just to let you know, too, there is a cloud on the title, so getting the information from a Realtor, getting things maybe even out there and offering it for sale could be done, but it'll take two to three months to go through the quiet title suit process. I honestly had asked Justin to start that about three months ago, but he said he wanted to wait till he knew for sure if it was approved to sell, which I guess makes sense. So anyway, we can talk about that some more later. One other thing, I did have now another complaint of the darkness at the intersection of Main and East 2nd Street. If you'll remember, we had that complaint about a year ago, and I had another complaint for the same reason. I did contact Consumers Energy to ask them to do an evaluation and do an estimate of cost to install an additional light there if they feel it's recommended. I talked to Kevin about it, and when they come out, Kevin, I'll meet with them. But in the meanwhile, Gabe from Consumers Energy is talking to their design people. If they put up a pole with a metal arm, we'll probably have to lose one parking spot on that corner because there's just no available grass, no available dirt. It's, they're going to have to go either into the sidewalk or the pavement, and it's easier to go through the asphalt, if I understood that correctly. So that's what they're looking at, and what two different people from Consumers Energy told me is that the cost of a pole to be put there would be approximately $100. I said, okay, who pays for the pole? They said, it's $100. I said, really? Are you sure? They said, yeah, it's $100. So there might be additional cost if they have to bore underneath concrete to get a wire there or something, but the actual cost of the pole and the installation is $100.
We found history in that true way.
Yeah, we did. We found, yeah, we found history.
2000 and 2001 or something.
Yeah. So we'll have more information on that for, maybe for our next meeting. Moving on then to committee reports. Anybody would like to give a committee report?
Just a reminder, the next ordinance committee meeting is scheduled for December the 8th at 10:00 a.m. here in council chambers, and we'll, as Devin mentioned, we've got a couple ordinances that will be up for first reading, and we'll have some more that are on their way to the attorney for their, his review. So we're moving forward to try to clean up ordinances, and that's what we'll be doing on the 8th as well.
Just a quick reminder, our current park survey is still accepting responses until November 21st. The survey can be found on our website and on Facebook. The survey data will be reviewed and organized at our public meeting on December, well, right now, it's going to be early December. The date is coming. We haven't, like, sat down and made a firm date, so that'll be coming soon for the, to go over the discussion. And the next parks meeting is scheduled Monday, November 28th at 6:30 here in council chambers.
Is there any indication, Chad, in terms of how many respondents have been to the survey ballpark?
I've talked to Megan, oh, was it Thursday? No, Wednesday. Is that pretty long ago?
Not very long ago.
Yeah. I think she said we had 92, somewhere in the 90s, I do believe, that have responded, so.
A lot more would be better.
Yes, a lot more would be better. But the millage for the parks passed. I was just looking at this to remind myself of how many votes there were that passed that. Oh, here it is. 487 yeses. So all 487 of you who voted yes on the millage, please do the surveys. Online, or if you need help with it, call or stop in at City Hall, we'd be happy to help you with that.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Chad. Anybody else? Any other committees? Presentation and approval of the bills?
I move that we approve the bills as presented, and that payment be authorized.
Second. We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We don't have any old business, so we'll move into new business. And now, Kevin, if you want to come up, and we'll talk about the possible approval of Everybody, I think, has a copy of the bill from Northern Pump and Well.
Yep.
And do you want to tell us about that?
Sure. The original proposal that they gave us had 4-inch CertaLock drop pipe, which is plastic. I don't think plastic's been on the market long enough to prove that that's the type of material we need to be using in a well application. It's very hard to inspect, and it works until it doesn't, and there's no way to tell when it's failing. So I asked them to give me the quote with the steel pipe, which is what we have now. We don't have to do any permitting if we replace with the existing type of material that was previously used. It's easily inspected. Based on its current application, it lasted about as long as, you know, longer than the well pump. So we're recommending the steel pipe in this application, which you can see the handwritten note at the bottom, the 27,429, is, that's the price with the steel pipe. I had Tim initial that, he watched me do the math and kind of broke it down so that we knew what we were looking at. We were asked to get a cost for the stainless steel pipe, which would have added $8,087 to the total cost of the project, and it might last, you know, longer for more cycles, you know. Where the steel pipe's probably going to last 10 to 12 years, which is when the maintenance will have to be done again. So the stainless steel pipe might last two or three times or even longer, but the, you know, the initial cost was more, and I don't see that much more benefit to spending that money.
That's almost four times as much.
Right. So the price to do the work was, that we agreed on was $27,429.50. Parts are in stock. If we approve this tonight, they can be in next week to do the install, Tuesday and Wednesday next week. They wanted to schedule two days just in case. So if there's any questions, I will happily do my best to answer them for you.
So just for clarification, Kevin, basically the three lined out items are being replaced on the invoice or the proposal by the 2250, 750?
Correct. All that CertaLock, the 4-inch CertaLock pipe coupling and adapters is for the plastic pipe. So we eliminated that, and then we're adding the 2250, 750 for the steel pipe.
Anyone else have questions for Kevin?
I move we approve the repairs to the well number four and authorize payment to Northern Pump and Well for not to exceed $27,429.50, and allow Superintendent DPW to sign said proposal.
Second. We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
And you don't need to stay if you need to get going in the weather.
I'm actually going to go home and try to get some sleep, so when we come back at 4:00, we'll be bright. I have a bunch of candles.
Well, be careful going home.
Thank you, guys.
Text me when you get home, let me know when the roof's up.
All right.
Thank you.
Next on our new business agenda is appointment, and I'll once again introduce Jared Lidle. Jared, if you wanted to stand up. Jared has agreed to fill our open position on the planning commission. I've known Jared since he bought a house here in Perry in 2001.
First person I've met, or known from Perry.
We looked at a few houses, he and his wife, Misty, bought one, and they're still there. So that's wonderful. They've been here ever since. Does anybody have any questions for Jared?
I've known Jared for a long time, and I definitely vouch that he is a very steady, thoughtful person, and will do his best.
Thank you, Mindy.
I move that we accept and approve the mayor's appointment of Jared Lidle to the planning commission for a term to expire January 2024.
Second. We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Jared. Devin already swore him in, so if you want to go, you may go. If you want to stay, you're welcome to stay, whatever you're up to. Looking now at our next agenda item, the planning commission's rezoning recommendation. This might be of interest to you. This was someone who applied to rezone a property in town, and we're going to let Larry explain what happened with that, and...
Basically, the application for rezoning was in fact presented to the planning commission at our meeting a little over a month ago. We called the public hearing date for this past planning commission meeting, and concurrent with that, there were no public comments at all other than made by the Ridenhowers, and so the planning commission voted unanimously in favor of recommending approval of the
Any questions for Larry about that? If not, then we'll move into possible adoption of the rezoning resolution.
I move that we accept and approve the resolution regarding the rezoning of property 221 North Watkins Street, Perry, Michigan. Applicant property owner Chase Ridenhour or Rick Ridenhour.
Second. We have a motion from Larry that's been seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Chase, you're all set.
Thank you, guys.
I'd say Rick, but Chase, you're the main one, right?
Yes, you do.
Yes, you do.
In this scenario.
In this scenario. Well, congratulations. I hope that works out.
I told Devin to let Shirley know that you might be visiting her tomorrow morning.
Yeah, probably. Yeah, we're pushing, so I'll fly in then.
You'll be good to go. I don't know if I'll have time to get your formal letter tomorrow.
Okay, but it'll be fine to proceed.
Yes. Yeah, it's documented in these minutes tonight, so you will be golden, but I will give you a formal letter.
Okay.
And I'll do it to both Rick and Lisa and to you two, Chase, because they're the owners.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
You're welcome.
Be careful.
Drive safely to go home.
Yeah, you too.
Thanks, guys. Yep. Yeah, seeing you soon.
Nice seeing you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Chase.
Looking at the next item, possible bonus for non-eligible longevity employees. If you have questions about this, Devin, can you answer them? This is something that we did last year, and I think we've done previous years, too, but that was my first experience.
I move that we approve a bonus for all those on city payroll that are not eligible for longevity bonuses, except council and mayor, in their amount not to exceed $40 each.
Second. We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
That was the fastest motion I've ever watched go by. I was like, man.
You think of us knowing that?
I was like, I was, I was going to talk about it, and I'm like...
Surely the spruce that's going to hold them out.
That's right.
Well, thank you for that. Anyways.
Okay, and now the item that I tried to talk more than I probably should have about earlier, the discussion regarding selling that property. So now that you've had a few minutes to think about how you want to proceed, what would you like to do?
I think it would be true before us to try to get some type of a current market value, whether it's a Realtor, or we end up listening to the Realtor and put it out for, you know, bid, but I know we've got a potential buyer in the wings, but that, I think, the only prudent thing to do is to really see if we can get what today's market would bring for it. I know it's a really unique piece of property that's not going to be worth a gold mine, but...
Yeah, it might not even be worth a coal mine, but it's...
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Does council know that there's a cap on what we spend on it, so even if it values higher, we get that, we're not getting that? Do you want to explain that to me?
Because this was a purchase through the state of Michigan, was it a tax sale or...
It was a tax sale, but it's the first one I've ever seen with stipulations. Because it was at a state level, not at the county, so we didn't get a county, like a foreclosure and get option to buy it. It was through the state. They offered it to the municipalities. We bet on it because we would hope for a well there. What I'm letting the mayor know to make sure, and maybe she can explain it from here, is it was $9,000-some that we bought it from the state, gave them a check. The stipulation of it is, is if we sell that property, if we sell it for $5,000, fine, you lost out on it. If we sell it for $15,000, the money that goes beyond that $9,000 goes to the state. I don't know why, and we were okay with it because we thought it was for a utility, but I just want to, by getting the property value, I didn't know for sure if you knew that we could ask for what it is, but you're not, the state's going to get that, anything that went over and beyond what we paid for it.
All I'm trying to avoid is that somebody comes in and says, I'll give you $3,000 for it, and we've got a market value at eight.
Okay, and I just, and that's perfect if that's your thought process. I just didn't want us to...
It's truly such a...
Have we had anybody offer nine, or do we...
No, we only have the one offer. We haven't really put it out there for sale because we had to wait until we knew that it was approved by the voters to sell. But we can certainly put it out there once we know what perhaps a fair market value is. The problem is, and I'll just say this as clearly as I can, it's in odd shape, but my math shows me that it's .4327 acres. So it's about a third of an acre. It doesn't have public utility. There's no water sewer to it. So to put a house there or a building of any kind that needs a well and septic, there's just not room. To have a building, you have to have that building envelope that will leave two sites of septic field. They have to have your primary and secondary, and then your well site has to be 50 feet from both of those. So it's just, it's a weird shaped piece. I think, and I don't absolutely know this because I wasn't part of it, but I think when the city bought it, they were thinking that they could use it for access to get to a potential future well site if they could buy the land behind. So the owners of the land behind, maybe they'd be interested in it because it could give them access to M52. And then there's neighbors on the north and south. The neighbor to the south is the one that has made us an offer, and that's just verbal. There's nothing in writing in regard to that yet, so... But yes, I'd be happy to get a couple of Realtors to look at that for us and do a market analysis on it, and then I'll report that back to you. analysis on it and then I'll report that back to you. Do you have preference as to who I get hold of?
No, I don't.
So what does that cost to have a Realtor?
Not standing. They don't make money on the market analysis.
I can just do diligence in my mind.
Oh yeah, I think it's a good idea. I'll get two Realtors to do that and I'll let you know, but... Like I said, there's a cloud on this title. We have to properly eliminate the interest of Jacqueline M. Lively, also known as Jacqueline M. Carlson, either by quitclaim deed or acceptable court order eliminating said interest. And so they post in the paper that information, asking her to come forward. They do that, I think, two consecutive times and if she doesn't come forward to sign up on it, then it goes to the judge who legally says it's now yours. So it just takes a little while. Okie doke. I will do that and report back. Any other business that may come before council at this time? Any public comment from anybody? Council discussions and observations? Items for our next agenda? I think we're gonna have some ordinances to do.
It looks like we'll have some ordinances to do.
We'll have the approval of the provisional license, the marijuana license, I believe we will anyway, we'll see. That's all I can think of, anybody else got anything?
I'm gonna swear in your people and you?
Oh, that's right, we're gonna have us all sworn in that we're reelected and have our pictures taken. Do you want Jared to come down and get his picture taken or do you want him to come at a different time?
County commission doesn't usually get their picture taken.
Oh, they don't? Okay. You don't have to get your picture taken. Anything else you can think of Devon?
I think there's more, but we'll get back.
Yep, we will. This is a very short meeting, but everybody, please be careful going home. Meeting's adjourned at 7:32.